Okay, we are now back on the record. Item 12.
Department of Committee reports non-action items. 12A, 2018 budget hearing number five, original adopted budget, B O C C, direction on the 2018 original adopted budget. Sherri Cassidy, County Controller, Administration and Financial Services, or Mrs. Sapp.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nicholas Sapp, Deputy County Administrator, if I can have my presentation. So, dun, dun, duh, here we are today to have discussion and direction on our 2018 original adopted budget. Commissioners, usually, once we get to this point in the budget, we don't have any additional information to present to you, to provide to you, unless you have very specific questions. Usually, you've received all the presentations from all the departments and offices, one or two from myself, and so you have all the information in front of you. You've been provided a draft of the financial roadmap. However, this year is different. As you know, we have effectively the majority of the board knew going through the first budget process. And at the last budget hearing, there were several questions, and you did request to see detailed information and additional analysis based on a few different pockets of information. So based on that, we have gone back and done some significant additional analysis. So I actually have a presentation for you to give you more information based on what you had requested previously. This is, again, this is not normal. This is not part of the process. Usually, we go directly to the spreadsheet and start noodling the budget and the five-year financial roadmap. But with that, the three items that you did ask us to look at and to provide additional analysis on was sales and use tax through a subsequent revenue review. In going through the sales and use tax, that did prompt us to look at other revenue sources. So we do have effectively 11th-hour updates, if you will, and so we have built those into the budget. The reserve strategy, I know we have that in place. It is articulated in your budget policy. However, it's not necessarily articulated through the financial roadmap, so we have made that adjustment. We have information on that. And then you will see how we are addressing that slightly different through the financial roadmap. And then lastly, the investment in human capital. I know there are a lot of questions about with the adjustment to midpoint and then the 2% across the board, how that effectively impacts all the departments and offices, and what that looks like as a bottom-line adjustment to each of the departments and offices. So we just have several additional charts as it relates to that. So Commissioners, with that, subsequent revenue review, you did ask to see additional analytics on the sales and use tax history. This is what we had originally brought forward to you, based on data that was a couple months older than what we have now. So we now have two new additional months of data. And based on what we had originally provided, you can see all of this, 2007 through 2016, is actual collections. And of course, 2017 is not budget, but what was projected at 8%. And then 2018 was the growth, the 4.5% with what we had built into the 2018 budget. However, as you have seen through the sales and use tax reports, the last two months, and again, we now have two months additional data than when we originally brought this information in front of you, what you have seen is that we have been flat, in fact, slightly down in August and September over prior or under prior-year collections. So I want to talk about that a little bit, and of course, I've got some additional charts and data for you, but I want to talk about that a little bit. Is that indicative of our economy slowing down? No, I do not think it is indicative of our economy slowing down. What, however, we have drilled into, and we've discussed this at the dais, but again, based on your request, we drilled a little bit further, is that your call in 2016, we had the significant hail. So many cars, many cars were replaced, roofs were done, windows were fixed, that type of thing. So what we're seeing is in 2016, through this same timeframe, we had an arbitrary, if you will, inflation, or that base, if you will, is inflated compared to what it normally would be. And so we saw a temporary boost as it relates to that. So that's why you're seeing now the collections are flat to prior year, because prior year was actually inflated. And also, I believe during that timeframe, was it Volkswagen had the recall on their diesel vehicles, and so we know those are all parked down there by PPIR, and so several people had to replace those vehicles. And so again, during that timeframe, what you're seeing is not that the economy is starting to dip in 2017, but comparing it to that inflated timeframe in 2016, we're actually flat and we're down slightly in the one month. So based on that, every time we are flat, our cumulative increase for the year goes down, obviously. That's how the trending works. And so based on that, and we are aware, we do not have October, November, and December, but we do know that the city has received October sales and use tax collections, and now we do trend somewhat similar to them. Their October sales and use tax is up a small amount, about 2.5% over the prior month. We also, if anybody's been out Christmas shopping, we know that we're seeing robust holiday spending. But the question then is, how does that compare to last year, and what does that look like in terms of the cumulative impacts? So we think that it is conservative but realistic to anticipate that that could be, because now we are at 8%, we are currently through the end of September, we are at 8% above 2016. But two months ago, when we looked at this, it was somewhere between 10 and 11% that we were up. So that's why we are reducing this down to 7%, and then of course, keeping this at the 4.5%, which obviously, we'll have discussions today as to whether we want to change that or not. But the reduction is $1 million in 2017, and then $1 million in 2018. But not to worry, we'll step through how that flows through the financial roadmap. Just to give you an idea of what we pay close attention to, and I know I've said this several times at the podium, but we always pay close attention to retail sales. Even though that is one component of the sales tax collections, not the use tax components, but the sales tax collections, it represents almost 55% of your total sales and use tax collection. So this represents $56 million for 2017 roughly of your budget. And why that's relevant is because that is obviously significantly higher than your property tax. So this is, this one little component is very, very important that we track this very closely. And retail sales has also in the past been very indicative of consumer confidence, consumer spending, et cetera, and what we're seeing as far as people's ability through the economic conditions to have discretionary income and that type of thing. So this is actually retail sales. And what you can see here is that this is month percentage change from 2017 to 2016. And here, you see this dip, and of course, through August. And of course, this is, again, not necessarily a result of economic conditions, but based on the fact that in 2016, this timeframe is when everybody was buying cars and replacing windows and getting their roofs done, et cetera, from the hail. And so what you see, again, is 2016 was inflated. So you see it's starting to come back up to, well, it's still below zero when you look at September, but you can see retail sales is absolutely what we track. We do anticipate going into, and this is a cumulative change, so now this is taking what's our rolling year-over-year average through nine months of the year. You can see that we started out high, we kind of peaked there in May at about 11%, almost 11%, but you can see the trend has been slowly declining, again, during that timeframe. What we anticipate, your cumulative growth is just under 6%. We anticipate that for the remaining three months of the year, this should stay now relatively flat, if not increase slightly, but we do not think we're going to continue to see these types of increases moving forward. So this is just an idea to give you a sense of why we have to be conservative, why we have to be careful when we look at adjusting our sales and use tax percentages, and to just give you a little bit more of a snapshot of what we are looking at in our office and why we come forward with more conservative projections. So to give you an idea, and this is kind of a cheat sheet that we'll probably reference back to during the direction on the budget, is that right now, based on the new projection for 2017, your projected increase of 4.5% equals roughly $4.6 million increase in sales and use tax revenue. That's, of course, just on your 1% sales and use tax. So you had asked to kind of see what would it be if we increased it a little bit greater? If you went to 4.75%, it would be an additional $255,000 over the 4.5%. We're just giving you the differential here, because that's what we would drop into the roadmap. And then 5% would be just over half a million dollars. And then, of course, 6% is $1.5 million. I have a line here at 5% because I would always caution going too far above that as we look at those projections. You had also asked to see, and I think Commissioners, this was just kind of for some clarification and some edification for those that are new on the board, you had asked to see what did we budget in terms of percentage growth over the prior year, which is your blue line, versus the actual results and how those funds came in. And what I had spoke to previously, and I just wanted to be able to illustrate this in a chart, is some of that, we conservatively budgeted, because there was a very intentional reserve strategy. As you know, if Commissioners Littleton and Glenn were on the board at the time, that was very intentional, because keep in mind, 2012, and if you looked at 2012, you'd see something similar to 2014. But 2012, 2013, we had those disasters, of course, more flooding in 2015. So it was intentional that we were conservative with our budget, because the excess, of course, went into the reserve and that federal, and was our match for those federal funds for those projects. So that was very intentional. This gap was very intentional. Of course, 2016 was the surprise that we didn't anticipate, and of course, resulted in our Tabor excess. So that, of course, is where we're looking at. And then 4.75% is what we had budgeted for 2017, and then 7%. This could go below 7%, it could go above 7%. With three months left in the year, you know, it's still, I mean, you're only 3/4 of the way there, and with the state collecting our sales tax for us, that's always a difficulty for us, because we never have a full year's picture, or you know, we've only ever, I mean, the most we've ever got is 75% of those collections for the year to look at projecting. And so of course, we want to be as realistic as we can be, but also, we want to be conservative, understanding that if we go lower and we have excess, then that's funds that then we can come back. We can always have a supplemental discussion throughout the year, or once we get those final numbers in March, we can come back to the board and say, hey, we've got excess, we want to revise this. Or we can use that funding for a specified ongoing purpose. We can do it one time in March when we come back. But the issue, or the concern that we have, because those of us that were here in 2008, if you go too high and you balance an ongoing expenditure with those ongoing sales tax revenues, and they don't materialize, then of course, you are in a situation where on an ongoing basis, you then have to make budget cuts. So we are very sensitive to that. And so that is why we always err on the side of being more conservative, being more cautious. And several of us in the room were here during that timeframe, and we remember that all too well. And if you have to come in and do that mid-year, that, let's say you have to cut $1 million, if you have to cut it at the beginning of the year, that's one thing, but if you have to cut it six months in, the impacts obviously are twice that. So that just gives you a sense of the strategy, why we budgeted, what we did, and what we are looking at in terms of the revenue. So seeing the reduction in that, we said, well, let's not just go back and look at sales and use tax. Let's go back and do, so now we've got, in some cases, we've got three additional months of data. Let's go back and see what the trending is doing. Let's talk to the departments and offices and see what we think is occurring with all these revenue line items. So you can see, these are basically impacts to your financial roadmap that you will see when we get to the spreadsheet. There is, of course, the reduction in sales tax, and I'm talking about 2018 right now. But this also is applicable for 2017. So not to worry, we're not going to be in an issue for 2017. We've got a reduction in sales tax of $1 million. We talked about the allowance for doubtful accounts, and that that did not trend for several years, and now is finally in a good trend that we can estimate that. You'll recall at our last, the last budget, monthly budget report that Ms. Cassidy did, that property tax line item in general fund showed it was down about half a million due to that new trending in allowance for doubtful accounts. So we thought it was accurate and prudent to put in a reduction of $300,000 here. But we are seeing increases in specific ownership tax, because it is directly related to our mill levy and our assessed valuation, which of course, is going up, of $1 million. So that is accurate to build in. Increase in interest earnings, we saw that we could do a bump of about $200,000 there. Had discussions with the clerk and recorder and looking at their fees, about $400,000 increase in there that we're estimating. And then an increase in intergovernmental revenue, which is of course, our indirect reimbursements that we receive from the federal and state through our funding sources, through our cost allocations, that are not restricted for a specific purpose. So that goes into the general fund, that goes into the general fund to balance the unrestricted general fund. So the net increase that you will see in the roadmap is effectively $600,000 here. And that's an ongoing number. That's an ongoing amount. This other blue piece, I need to bring to your attention, and I'll try to articulate it and explain it as best I can. In prior years, what we do through the budget process is, as you know, we've spent a lot of time going through the policy and how we budget, but we, all restricted funds are addressed separate outside of this process, because those restricted funds come in, and then they are used for a restricted purpose. The partially restricted funds, which is your community investment fund, your CIP fund, your self-insurance fund, your DHS fund, and your road and bridge fund, those partially restricted funds receive restricted funding. So if we need to allocate an increase, or if we need to address due to the compliance associated with those funds, we have done that outside of the financial roadmap process, and those have not specifically hit the financial roadmap through this process. However, based at the request of this board, and what we are seeing with road and bridge, and of course, the Tabor reset, and the investment that we anticipate doing back into the road infrastructure, we are now pulling those adjustments that we have done to the road and bridge back into the financial roadmap, so that you can see the impacts of that. So what you see, what you will see here is a reallocation of specific ownership tax that was previously allocated to the road and bridge fund for the personnel increases of $400,000. But you will also see an increase when we go to the financial roadmap of the respective $400,000 for those personnel increases. So those are changes in the numbers from what you've previously seen, but it does not, it has a zero impact to the bottom line. And that is, again, so that we can see the impacts to that entire road and bridge operation. So ongoing, you will see a total increase to the revenue line item of about $1 million. Our reserve strategy, are there any questions revenue, or just want to hold them to the end?
Good.
Okay. Reserve strategy, very busy chart, but really not too difficult data to track here, Commissioners. We have talked about in the budget policy, and we've talked several times, you up at the dais and myself at the podium, about our reserve strategy. Because a reserve is one-time, it is not ongoing, it's a one-time reserve, a one-time savings that you have at your disposal to use for emergencies and that type of thing. Our strategy has been to utilize one-time savings, one-time unanticipated revenue or underspending to build that over the years. And that goes back to that sales tax chart that I spoke to earlier, that was very intentional, that's what we did during that timeframe. But to give you an idea of what that looks like, the historical underspending and unanticipated revenue, you can see here that the underspending, 1.6, $1 million, 1.7, $1.1, $1 million, it runs right about $1.25 on average million that we have in underspending in general fund. That's based on your unrestricted general fund. And so those have historically gone then into a reserve to be used for disasters. Of course, 2016, as we get into that, very different, because the Tabor situation and the excess revenue is, obviously, we had to address that differently. The unanticipated revenue in the green bar is what we have historically trended. And what that means is we balanced a budget, let's say on $100 million, what we brought in, $106 million. So we had $6 million extra, and that went into, that was unanticipated revenue, and that went into building the reserve. So again, this was the bulk of what you saw during those timeframes that were used to address the disasters. Remember, the five-year impacts of that were roughly $10 million. And so that's something to consider during that. And then we also had other items that we addressed during the budget process during these years. But you can see in 2014, it was only half a million, and then in 2015, $1.1 million. And then, of course, 2016, this large amount of $5.8 million, we know was a large contributing factor, along with the increases in the state revenues for DHS and those state grants that we saw, that really tipped us over into the Tabor excess. So all in all, you can see, this is what we've been trending, $8.5, $6 million, $2.2, $2.1, $6.8. This is what we have seen in terms of underspending and unanticipated revenue. Because there is the potential that we're going to have the discussion about possibly increasing our projection on sales and use tax, we also thought it was relevant to add the purple line, which says the bulk of these increases were due to sales and use tax projections and a strong economic recovery. So if you take those out of the equation, if you take sales and use tax excess collections out of the equation, your underspending and your unanticipated revenue really looked more like $4.3 million, $3.5, just $800,000 here, actually, a negative $100,000 here, so effectively flat, and then $2.5 million. So we think that's relevant, because if we anticipate we're going to continue seeing these increases, yet we budget to spend into them, we need to understand that effectively does impact a strategy if we want to use this, continue to use this for a reserve strategy. We cannot do one, we cannot do both. We would have to do one or the other. So that's just to really try to explain that. And again, 2013 intentional replenishment of reserves, and then 2016 was the Tabor excess. So if we look at historical underspending and unanticipated revenue, let's look at 2017 in and of itself, because that's what's driving your beginning number for the financial roadmap as we go into that. And then I have a chart for you looking at what 2018 through '22 would look like. But for 2017 underspending, we actually are anticipating, and we are in the unique situation right now during this part of the budget process, to go in, because of course, we're already in December, so we have 11 months of activity for the year. We have coordinated with departments and offices as it relates to what their obligations are through the end of the year. Also, I know there's been discussions as it relates to, you know, what items are tied up in POs that will need to be re-appropriated to the next year. We've taken an initial stab at that. And the good news is, is that we anticipate this year that we're, excuse me, actually going to have a little bit more at about $2 million instead of $1.25 million to go into a reserve, underspending. This number is not anywhere on your financial roadmap. So this is one-time dollars, underspending, going into, from 2017 going into 2018. And let me just, sorry, I lost my badge. I need to take a breather anyway. So let me just, let me just talk a little bit about the underspending number. I know in other agencies that I've worked at, and I know in the federal government, there is very much a, if you're given a million-dollar budget and you only spend $800,000, we're going to reduce that budget by the $200,000 and set it at the $800,000 moving forward. It's what we call in our financial world, the use or lose mentality. We have never encouraged that in El Paso County. We have always encouraged savings to go to the greater good, and we have not seen a consistent underspending in a specific department as it relates to, okay, maybe finance is consistently overfunded. If we were to see that, we would have the conversation with that department and office, and if we identified that there was excess funds, which of course, coming out of the recession, we haven't seen that, but we would have that, and then we would bring that forward as part of this budget process. But we have not seen that. So I think it's very important to clarify that. This is not something that then we would dig in and say, oh my gosh, we've got $2 million excess, we need to go in and reduce budgets for next year according to that, because it fluctuates based on projects, based on personnel. We have people, of course, that are hired and terminated throughout the year, based on operational contracts, all of that, all of that fluctuates. But the good news is, is this is what we are looking at, $2 million going into the reserve that is not on your financial roadmap for the 2018 budget. So let's talk a little bit about the 2017 unanticipated revenue, which would be the second component that would not, traditionally would not be on your financial roadmap, that could be utilized towards a reserve strategy. As of October, you saw in the report that you just received last week, we had already brought in $7.3 million above what we had budgeted in the general fund unrestricted. Our budget projections are projecting that that will be roughly $8.5 million based on, again, three remaining months of the year. So keep in mind, Commissioners, we have projected to transfer $3.3 million to the self-insurance fund for our increased medical claims and IBNR, which is a liability, it's an accounting transaction we are required to book, that we are now, based on New Gatsby's, required to actually fund. So $3.3 of that will be going forward. So that gives us a remaining $5.2 million as the starting balance in the financial roadmap. What you saw previously, I believe, was $4.3 million. So right now, the $5.2 million is built into the financial roadmap. So you do have the ability, if you would like, to take that from the starting balance, put that into a reserve, and take that $2 million to $3 million, whatever you would like to do, or you can use, or you can choose to use it for other purposes, balancing the budget up from an operational perspective moving forward. And I say that because if I were to go and look at doing just a conservative, a conservative projection of our reserve, and Commissioners Littleton and Glenn, I know you've seen something similar to this in the past, of course, we were on that track, and then it was eaten up by the disasters, and then of course, Tabor ate up the rest of it. But this is similar to the strategy that we presented before in the past, is that for the 2018 budget, which would of course, be any excess that's left over from 2017, works very much like your checking account, you would have underspending of $2 million here, so going into 2018, unless you wanted to take some from the financial roadmap, you would have, to increase this, you would have $2 million into your rolling reserve balance, that would come up here, and then using conservative estimates based on that five-year average that we just looked at of $1.25 million in underspending. And interestingly enough, our tracking of unanticipated revenue, when we took some of the other, when we took some of the other analytics out of it, was very close to the same at about $1.2, $1.3 million here. So if you were conservative with these, and we had an intentional strategy, again, moving, continuing on that intentional strategy to increase that reserve, this is what you would potentially be looking at during, as a reserve in 2022 at $12 million. Now keep in mind, what I'm showing you here is separate and apart from the financial roadmap. This is in addition. And the reason why we do not build these into the financial roadmap is because this is based on one-time savings or one-time excess. It is never appropriate or prudent, and we learned this back in our difficult budget days, it is never prudent to fund ongoing expenses with one-time funds. And this, there's no guarantee with this. We do not know if a department or office is going to have an emergency and have to spend that excess that they have projected, and maybe that underspending does not materialize at that amount, or we have a dip in economy and the revenue does not materialize.
Let me give you a chance to, thank you, Mr. President, give you a chance to take a breath here for just a second. So help us all understand, in 2021 then, how much would our total reserve be? I understand that based on the strategy, we're going to save an extra $12 million, but where are we starting off from? What other sorts of reserve What other sorts of reserve money would be there? And this is anticipating that we don't spend any of it.
Right.
Between 2022. So if we just saved and didn't have to spend, what would that true number be in 2022?
So in 2022, as far as excess reserve that you could appropriate, would be, right now you have half a million, I didn't put that in here, would be 12.5 million. Now, you do have, obviously, additional reserves, you have your Tabor reserve, that's the only statutory requirement for a reserve, but the bigger reserve that you have is a very obvious cash flow reserve, because not all your money comes in at a timing. The property tax has a big impact, because by June, you've received all your property tax, and then you effectively spend it down through the last six months of the year. And so December and January are always pretty tight before that next property tax payment comes in in February. So looking roughly at that, and I'm just going to pull this out of the sky based on the last one that I saw, it was around 14 to 17 million additional that you have that has to be used for the timing of cash flow that we cannot spend into for fear of not paying the bills, obviously, that would be in the unrestricted component. And then you've got your other restricted, you've got your other restricted components there. But that is, and then, and what we're doing, that question right there, Commissioner, actually, what it does is it, it transfers from a budget discussion to a financial statement discussion. And when we go through the financial statements, or we can bring it with the most recent sooner, if you'd like, we can go through what those numbers actually look like. But that's very detailed and articulated within our financial statements. But the last that we looked, we were around 14 to 17 million that was needed just for a timing of cash flow of those payments.
And how much is in the Tabor reserve?
The Tabor reserve is 3%, so it's like 7 million now? Oh, I was going to say 5.6, so 7 million. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez has a question.
Yes.
All right, thank you. It's kind of more of a general comment, but you can expand on it. So one of the things, I know the reserve strategy going back to several years is for utilizing the underspending and excess, and most of that or all of that has, over the last several years, because our trying to build back from the disasters, has been spent on the matching funds. And so we haven't really built up any true emergency reserves. And so, once again, as you mentioned here, this is based off of not a guarantee, may or may not happen, there may be other expenditures. And that's why I think, you know, last month or a couple of weeks ago, we did talk about having a one-time addition to not just what we think will happen, but actually putting a little bit of money today to a true reserves. And if then this builds up over time, that would be something for, you know, disasters, but potentially downturns in the futures.
Absolutely.
And so, but I did want to highlight that we do, I believe, a majority of, do want to have a one-time this year, put a little bit of extra money to a true disaster, because what we had before, the rolling reserves excess had been spent. And had there been a new disaster last year, I think the scenario I gave, if we had a million-dollar disaster last year, how would we fund it? We would have had to cut something from the current budget.
That's correct.
And so this is why we do want to build a true disaster reserve, and I just want to highlight that. So, but this is great information. Thank you.
And obviously, commissioners, just as further, further information, once these reserves are established, and Commissioner Littleton and Glenn know this, nothing is expended into that reserve without it coming to the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioners for formal approval, even if, for example, we were to take the $2 million for 2018 and appropriate that in a line item within the budget, so it's very clearly articulated to the citizens that this is an emergency, this is an emergency line item of $2 million, even though it was in the budget and our budget statutes and policies do not require us to come back, once it's in the budget, for, for approval to expend that, as long as we are in compliance with the procurement laws. We actually have a separate process for that, because it is your reserve, that we would still bring that forward to get approval for that, so that we are looking, anything related to the reserve is done in the utmost transparency as it relates to that. And then you all aren't looking one day thinking you have a $4 million reserve and find out that it's been spent. So that's, that's something that we do with that.
Commissioner VanderWorff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at the chart here, you know, rolling reserve balance, you've got 12 million in the 2022 column there.
Yes.
Have, what analysis have we done to indicate what is the right number for a reserve, for a contingency?
Well, you know, it's.
The end state number.
It's an excellent, it's an excellent question, Commissioner, because we've really never been in the financial situation to build an adequate reserve. So we have not done the analysis yet as to what that number should look like, would look like. I'm sure there are many pronouncements and guidance that provided at the federal level from our finance agencies and budgets. We have had conversations with the bond raters. I've had very extensive conversations with the bond raters over the years as to what would be a good number and as to what it would look like. But they, they don't really even lock you into what it should be X percent, because there's so many other components that they look at as it relates to that. The discussions that I've had with them is obviously, when it's going up, the bond rate, that really helps your bond rating. When you deplete it and it's going down, obviously, that significantly hurts your bond rating. So, but, but it's something that I know that the team would, would love to look at moving forward, but we've just never been in a financial situation. Again, we were excited, we thought we were heading there in 2012, finally recovering and we're building, but every, every piece of excess went into that, went into those disasters.
So, you know, I'm, I'm very interested, like many of my colleagues, in having a reserve here, because we, we definitely do not want to be in a place where we are hunting around for money in the middle of a crisis so we can pay overtime or whatever the challenges are.
That's correct.
And I don't know if 12 million is the right number, if that's too big, maybe, or if that's not big enough. So I'd say it would be great to maybe get a presentation from the team, and it doesn't have to be this week, next week, maybe it's in January or something, about what that number ought to look like. Now, I'm sure it'll be bigger than the 2 million or the 2 and 1/2 million, you know, that you're, have as, I guess it's as a proposal here on this chart. So notwithstanding other considerations and so forth, I'm definitely interested in some number like that for this year. And then we ought to kind of figure out what ought it look like.
Absolutely.
And bond ratings and costs for contingencies can all be in the state of play for that determination.
And my recommendation, Commissioner, would be, you know, once we close out the 2017 year and we know what that, that final number is, then we could come back to you with that presentation and say, based on all of this, based on, based on all of this research, this, this is, this is really what it looks like. To give you, just to throw this out here, and of course, this is a very dramatic example, but when Boulder County went through the flooding that we went through, their, their local match was 50 million, roughly. I heard anywhere from 45 to 55 million, but it was, 50 million was their local match based on all the devastation that they saw in that, in that Lyons area, and that we would have in no way been able to address a disaster of that magnitude. And I'm not sure that we would have to based on, obviously, their geographic layout is different than ours, but just to give you an idea, and I'm not saying that we should target 50 million, but just to kind of throw that out there. And I did talk about that at my disaster presentation, which Commissioner VanderWorff attended that session at CCI. Kudos to you.
And, and they're bolder.
And they are bolder, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, one of the, one of the nice things, as you bring up the question, and I think it's a very pertinent question, you know, how much is enough? You know, you guys will have the opportunity for at least the next four years, or three years beyond this, to put together and look at that budget. And it may look very different from year to year, depending upon the revenue that comes in. So while we're projecting this, and I think it's a good idea to have that, that goal, it could look very different, and we'll get to see what that number looks like next year.
Commissioner VanderWorff.
Yes, thanks. Just, you know, one quick comment, notwithstanding whatever that analysis might provide, just in my head, again, minus the analysis, somewhere in the range of 5 to 10 million seems like the right number. But I, I would defer to the analysis to see if that's too much, too little, or whatever. And the 2 million is, would be on our way towards that.
And so, commissioners, what I have done with the financial roadmap is this is, when we go to the spreadsheet, this is actually a section on top above the operational strategy is what we're calling. So if you make the determination that you do want to take, as Commissioner Gonzalez proposed, that you do want to take one-time funding from the roadmap, the operational roadmap, you will have the ability to do that as we move forward. Of course, if there are three head nods to do so, and I'll go through that, explain how that process works when we get there.
Commissioner Low.
Thank you. But just for clarification purposes, so this is already a set aside, that is a reserve that we already are allocating above and beyond any budget that we're going to be talking about in the next few minutes.
That's correct. This is above and beyond, this is not included in the financial roadmap.
So we already have set that aside and not included, just as we'd requested.
That's correct. So with that, commissioners, we'll talk about the investment in human capital. Just a lot of spreadsheets here, because you asked to see, you know, and we promised we'd bring this back to you. The 2018 adjusts from minimum to midpoint. We added columns that we think are relevant to you. This is by department and office. And again, commissioners, you see this increased amount that we talked about based on what was originally projected, due to us now including Roden Bridge in the roadmap instead of just addressing it in the Roden Bridge Fund. But what you see here, all in all, I should say, commissioners, the net differential is roughly the 400,000 of what we reallocated in specific ownership tax. So what we're doing is we're just taking the Roden Bridge personnel and DHS and not just addressing them in those restricted funds, we're actually pulling them into the roadmap so that you can see the full impact to the, to the public works, because I know that is something that we have, that we have stated that is, that is very important, that the citizens see the investment in that, in that program and that function. So here you can see the departments listed off to the left, and this is the number of employees that would be impacted based on the adjustment from minimum to midpoint. So this means this is how many employees are greater, or I'm sorry, are less than 86% below, or even greater, I should say, less, less than that, at a greater deficit, below midpoint. And so this is the, the employees that have been identified, this is the number. We went back and drilled into those spreadsheets a little bit more, updated the data, coordinated with departments and offices where we had employees that were maybe on probation or something along that line, they wouldn't get that necessarily right away. So we went back, and that number is 1.4 million. And then you can see on the number of employees for, and we're calling it a COLA, it's a pay-for-performance, whatever we want to call it, but the number of employees that would effectively be impacted here is the 2,282. Keep in mind, commissioners, any employees that are 100% restricted or funded by restricted funds are not on this chart, because they would be funded by those restricted funding streams. So that would not be something that would then be requested or come out of that, that general fund, financial roadmap. And so the 2.2 million here, and so for a total adjustment of 3.6 million, but again, we reallocated over 400,000 to offset that. So this is what the 2018 adjustment, I believe, I can't remember which commissioner asked, because this is not weighted, obviously, even. It's dependent on addressing those greater deficits. Commissioner Gonzalez is putting his finger up, saying it was him that asked. But obviously, you can see greater amounts in the district attorney's office, in the sheriff's office, based on, in Department Public Works, Roden Bridge, based on the fact that those employees are much further away from midpoint than other employees within the county. The COLA, the 2%, is a 2% kind of across the board. What we do is we take the personnel budgets and we, we do a calculation, increase those 2%. And then based on that, we determine, we determine what this amount is. So that's what the 2018 looks like.
Questions here?
Yep.
Commissioner Waller.
So I want to make sure, thank you, Mr. President. I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So let's take that district attorney line there.
Yes.
So is the total number of their employees then 213 plus 118?
No, no, I'm sorry. This is, this first column is how many employees would be impacted by the midpoint adjustment, and this is how many, this number of employees, 2013, is how many would be impacted by the cost of living. Because, because effectively, all employees, unless they are on probation or a performance plan, would be impacted by the cost of living, but not all of the district attorney's office would be addressed in the initial adjustment to midpoint, only 118. And that's, of course, the first initial stab to get everybody so that they're no less than 86% of midpoint. So no, the first adjustment would impact 118 employees, and then the second would impact all 213.
And by all 213, you mean that's all the employees that are in the district attorney's office?
Is that the final FT account? Yes.
Okay. I was just trying to understand that.
Sure.
So the 118 that are impacted by the adjustment.
Yes.
Would also then be impacted by the COLA as well?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Is that the way you understood it?
Yeah.
That's my question.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So effectively, everybody would be impacted by the COLA, but only those employees that are paid the least as it, as it, as compared to their midpoint in their, in their pay range and their band, would be impacted by, by this. So to take another look at this, and we could actually provide you this spreadsheet, I know we have it, for each year of the next five years, so you can see kind of how that staggers. It's a lot of detailed information in a sheet, we couldn't fit it in a slide, but the next sheet shows you.
Question here.
Oh, yes.
Go back then. So, so my question is, I'm just thinking out loud through this process, because that was going to be my question, was whether the 215, so we'll use the district attorney's line, 213 included the 118, and you said that does. So in my thought process, because they are getting, some of them, probably significant, which is great, we do need to do the human capital, would there be a way of breaking out, say, the people who did not receive the midpoint adjustment on the left, those people getting the 2% COLA, and then the people who got the midpoint adjustment perhaps being split out and getting a 1%, because they would have gotten the midpoint adjustment and then still trying to benefit them, but they did just receive a, an increase there? Is that an option? I'm just thinking out loud.
Sure. Now, the options are limitless on what you can do as it relates to these percentages, and how, I mean, how you would want to go in and adjust these. Absolutely, that, that is an option. But keep in mind, this, if I can go to the next slide, this adjustment to midpoint to get everybody in 20, by 2021, to no less than 95.5%, takes into consideration that those people, that these people would also be getting the 2% to get them to the 95, 99.5. If they didn't, we would not make that goal. Does that make sense?
Commissioner VanderWorff.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, actually, I do appreciate the breakout in the chart, the, the column on the left, which is what you're calling a midpoint adjustment, and then on the right is the COLA. But on the left, it's really kind of an equity adjustment. There was this.
That's correct.
Enormous amount of analysis done in the county to try and find out if you've got two positions of the same, with the same, you know, work requirements, and in one part of the county, they were getting paid X, and in another part of the county, they were getting paid X minus 10. So this is, this first column, I think, is my priority about getting equity of pay for similar job positions. And this is, for whatever reason, we just somehow fell out of that over time, and I think this is the reflection of that analysis. Now, so if we do this and get everybody to an 86%, then when the COLA, when we, when we do a cost of living adjustment in the future, everybody gets an equal compensation in that COLA. If you have anybody that's not at equity on the left-hand side, and everybody gets a 2% COLA at that point, well, some people are getting 2%. a 2% COLA at that point, well, some people are getting 2% of a smaller base, and you end up reproducing inequity again over time. So for me, my priority is the column on the left, and then we can have the COLA on the right. And whether 2% is right, or smaller or larger, we can have that discussion. But with that, why 2%? Why is that the number you all chose?
2% is based on, we said, okay, our original plan was to try to get everybody there within, well, originally, we were hoping four years. And then based on financial, we said, okay, it's going to be five years. So coupling these adjustments, the adjustments to midpoint, with a 2% enables us to still get there within the initial five-year timeframe, understanding that at that point, based on the conversation that we had before, that they're still going to be seven years behind. But it was based on revenue sources, what was available, what we could potentially fund, and also staying within that five-year timeframe. If we wanted to shorten that, we could certainly look at what that looks like to get there faster. And really, of course, if we wanted to expand it, but we run the risk of then that date is 10 years old, and then you're right back to doing adjustments to midpoint again. You kind of never catch up as it relates to that component. A lot of it was really driven by the funding that's available. The next slide, just for the financial roadmap, of course, your financial roadmap goes out to 2022, but this is, over the next four years, addresses those adjustments, keeping in mind that last year was the first step, or 2017 was the first step, the first year. This is then what it looks like. So really, what you're seeing is, you're seeing that as you get closer, as you get closer to 99.5%, in some cases, you're going to have fewer employees. So for example, and I'll just use, the district attorney's office and sheriff's office are great examples to use. The district attorney's office has got greater disparities on the lower end, but as we get closer to the 99.5%, that kind of starts to level out in terms of you don't have as many employees that are that much behind the midpoint. But in the sheriff's office, of course, then as you get closer, what happens is now you've actually got more employees that are within this 91 to 100%, that last 10% range. So it's just very individual for the department and office based on what their pay. And of course, this is drawn from every individual employee and their specific pay within their specific job description. But you've got different scenarios and different things occurring in different departments depending on where their employees are at and how many employees are there in terms of where they are at within that adjustment to midpoint. So it varies, but this is what it looks like. Again, this is driven, you know, this data includes, you know, your 2,300 lines of data, employees, that pulls, that this is summarized, and also includes the FICA and retirement associated with it. So that's really what we're looking at. So this is then the by-year adjustment to midpoint that we had proposed. And then the next one is then the 2% cost of living, which really is across the board, so it just increases by that minor prorate amount every year. Pretty straightforward, that calculation.
Commissioner Vanderworth has a question.
Oh, yes.
Yes, go back to chart 17, please.
Yes.
So just want to make sure that I do understand this. So in 2018, there are inequities in pay, but then also the providing up to 86% of midpoint that's in that line. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So when we go from 18 to 19, we have already addressed the inequities in pay component, and we don't have that as an issue going forward from 18 to 19. You're just working on midpoint adjustment from 18 to 19. Is that correct?
No, this is all inequity. And this is just, this is just a staging, a phasing, if you will, a transition to get to where everybody is then by 2021, 99.5% of midpoint. By this point, it's a seven-year-old midpoint.
Well, if you're defining not being at midpoint as an inequity, then I guess you would
That's correct.
Okay, that's what you're doing. Yeah, I just see that as just getting up to midpoint, whereas the inequities, the term I've been using for inequities has, it relates to two people with the same job description, one's getting paid less than the other, and that's inequity. And that's just the way I'm using the term. The reason why I bring it up is because if you look at the district attorney's line 407 in 18 to 223 in 19, the inequities in pay, it looks to me like they're addressed in the 18 budget. But then to go from 86 to 92, which would be across the board for all the employees, it'd be another 223. But you'll see a difference when you go down to sheriff. To fix those inequities in pay, you're at 310 plus to get to 86, but then that's a much bigger number to go from 86 to 91, and that's just simply because there's a lot more employees.
That's correct. And that's because right now, you have more employees in the district attorney's office that are less than 86% than you do in the sheriff's office.
Right.
So in the next year, completely different scenario, we flip, you will have fewer employees in the DEA's office that are less than 91% and more employees in the sheriff's office that are at 90, at 91%. So again, individual scenarios based on what those departments and offices currently look like.
So I just want to make sure I understand that in the 18, going to 86%, there's really two things going on there. One is to get everybody to 86%. But the other part is fixing inequities in pay between two people that have the same job description, but they're in different departments in the county. Because you're taking all of those folks and putting them to 86.
Yes, and those are being, those are being addressed individually. Now, if you've got them in two different departments, yes, they would, their same midpoint, their same target, if you will, would be the same through the compensation, through the compensation analysis.
All right. All right, thank you.
Their target, their targeted midpoint would be the same. And then I think I showed this one, this is a pretty basic chart there, just shows what that 2% would be based on the personnel budgets. And then this is just annual totals, so you can kind of see what we're looking at with our investment in human capital. This would be the staging of the adjustment to, from minimum to midpoint, and then also the 2% COLA. So that would just be, this would be then what you would see, commissioners, for 2018. And I believe, I think Commissioner Gonzalez asked to see this as well, when you see the 2017 budget in that budget document for a specific department, and let's say that this were built into the 2018 budget, you would see that then for the 2018 budget, that their budget would then be increased by this amount, and that would be in their budget ongoing, the budget adjustments. Through the preliminary balanced budget, I believe we just dropped them into one line item in our budget adjustments line item in our, within the document. So this would actually then, you would see that specific adjustment to each of the departments and offices. So with that, commissioners, here is the revised financial roadmap. And I apologize, small numbers, we'll be able to zoom in hopefully a little bit better as we get into this. And of course, we will pull this up in Excel and start to play here shortly. But you can see the beginning operational savings based on increased unanticipated revenue. Again, this number was 4.3, it's now 5.2. You do have the ability, if you want, to move some of that into reserves, or you can utilize it to expend and appropriate moving forward into future years. Your net change, again, this was around 15.5, 15, yeah, 15.4, 15.5, last year, or the last time we brought this forward, based on all the revenue changes that I've articulated, you can see that that is now an increase, and of course, that's ongoing. You can see these have not changed. This is the investment in parks, capital, fire and flood, these are all Tabor retention, I-25 gap, and critical road projects. And then additional ongoing, which is an increase to the 2.3 million that was built into the 2016 budget into high-impact road infrastructure. We know that the public works department has needs for federal match for projects that are coming down. We know that they have needs for paving. We know that, I'm at a loss with, oh, and then there's one-time projects for the annual paving and gravel programs, but then there's also one-time projects that need to be addressed. So this would be, to effectively be put into their budget to use at their discretion where they can get the best bang for their bucks to impact, be the most impactful with the roads. The adjustments to midpoint, you can see we changed those. Again, this is a larger amount, but part of that revenue is in here to offset. So the net impact of that was the $600,000 that we discussed with the additional million up here of beginning operational savings. So everything else is kept the same here, facilities, major maintenance, and then these two items that we brought forward. So everything else, with the exception of the beginning operational savings, the net change, and then how we've reallocated these investment in human capital, everything else has been kept the same from what we originally proposed. And that is where we can make adjustments accordingly. But you can see now, effectively, at the end of 2018, you have additional 1 point, almost 1.6 million. And again, that's due to the additional revenue and to the additional increase here in operational savings. And what you choose to do with that is at your discretion and direction. And of course, we have the five-year because, just because you have 1.5 million here does not necessarily mean it is available ongoing. And so we like to look at what those bottom-line impacts are associated with that. So with that, commissioners, it's up to you if you would like to take a break, or if you want to head into the spreadsheet. You can see here, we have representatives from all our departments and offices. If there are subsequent questions that need to be posed, how the process works, and I will kind of articulate how our process works here. Once we go to the spreadsheet, we will scroll the best we can. I will type as clearly as I can and as quickly as I can. I will not enter a line item into the budget to see the budget impacts unless I see three head nods that say, yes, let's throw in that $400,000 and see what it looks like. If only one of you, you know, let's say Commissioner Littleton really wants something and nobody else agrees with it, I'm sorry, I keep picking on Commissioner Gonzalez, so you're next, then we would, then we would not proceed with that. But that is up for your discussion and direction. And then once we are satisfied with where it lands, those are the numbers that we will take, and we will build into the 2018 budget, and we will bring that back for your formal approval next Tuesday. Just to be clear, we are looking at a five-year impact so that we are not being short-sighted and just looking at the impacts of one year in and of itself, but you are only effectively approving or giving direction and final direction on the 2018 budget. Next week, you will only be approving the 2018 budget. The roadmap is really a guide, and it's just that, a roadmap to see now where the financial direction of the county and how those changes that are implemented today will impact us for the next five years.
Commissioner Vanderworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of quick items, and it's just the way, perhaps, you know, being new to how you present the budgets and so forth. We've had a discussion about 400K in pretrial services. Is that already embedded in the budget, or is that something we have to deliberate over on this chart?
So right now, we have $155,000, and so the differential would be built in when we go to the spreadsheet.
Okay. And then the, I see the zero for the reserve, emergency reserve contribution, about a quarter of the way down the page.
That's correct.
So this at present has no additional contribution. There's not like some amount of money already in the budget as a contribution, and then we're deliberating over above and beyond that? Or is this zero in totality right now?
Just to clarify, we are anticipating the 2 million, and then anything additional that you wanted to take out of the operational side, as we're calling it, absolutely can be done, and then we would take it out here. And when we go to the spreadsheet, I will have the reserve strategy above this, and then so you will very clearly see what the reserve looks like as well as the operational side.
So the budget is at present, including 2 million going into the reserve?
That's correct.
And this is a discussion if we want to add more or what have you, or take out
That's correct.
or whatever. Okay. And then one last question for you, just very briefly. Maybe I'm missing it, maybe it's actually in the budget. But we also have PPRTA, and we, the citizens of El Paso County are beneficiaries of the projects in PPRTA. I'm presuming we're not including that in these discussions, and I know it's not part of our budget, per se, that we have direct control over, but it is part of the total equation regarding investment in infrastructure, roads and bridges, and so forth. So to me, in my head, it seems to make sense that it's a line that's in here because it can give us a total sense of what is going into road and bridge investment.
So the PPRTA is a separate legal entity. It was set up that way and established that way through the passing of the ballot back in 2003, whenever that was, 2002 for 2003. We do not include that in this, much like in our budget at all, because we are not required and allowed to do that. If you want to see the total investment in roads, that's a subsequent presentation where we would take, this is a component, the PPRTA, and then anything else that you would like to see in terms of a full, this is the investment in our roads and public infrastructure. But no, it's separate legal entity, separate dedicated revenue stream, never to be considered as part of this. And I'm not even sure that legally we can put money from here into there.
I'm not saying that in this deliberation, we would put money in or take money out because it is a separate legal entity, just as you say. But it is an investment that is taking place because of a 1% sales tax revenue stream. And when we do deliberations here, knowing about that investment might help us characterize what we want to do with our investment, because really, total investment in county infrastructure is the combination of the two. That's really just the point I'm making. I just don't see it up here, so.
Sure. And it can be a subsequent discussion or presentation, but it's definitely not part of our county budget.
Correct. Commissioner Waller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be happy to give you the Reader's Digest view of RTA. It's the budget this year, well, the revenues will come in at about $104 million, 73% of which gets spent, that's allocated to the city of Colorado Springs. You know, realistically, our portion of that's only, not even all of the remainder, but most of the remainder of that.
17% roughly.
And only 55% of that remainder goes into capital construction. The rest is for maintenance, and then 10% is for transit as well. So, you know, from a county roads perspective, there are fewer RTA dollars than one might think.
We are going to take a 10-minute break before we start.
Thank you.
We stand in recess. Sorry for that brief 10-minute delay. We are now back on the record.
So commissioners, here we have the spreadsheet. You can see the 2018 original adopted budget, financial roadmap as of today. So what you see is the reserve strategy, which we, excuse me, had articulated in the slide, and that's here in case we want to do anything from here going in to there. And so you can see this is the same illustration that you've seen, putting 2 million in for 2018, and then up to 12 million. And of course, this does not include that half a million reserve, so we can, if you'd like, we can, it's probably just prudent to, oh, I just don't like it when it doesn't do my formatting. There you go. So if you'd like, we can, this is the only time that Mr. Dave Rose approves of me really doing math in public, just, I'll put that out there. So you can see that really helps to put that in there, and then really gives you a full picture there. What you see down in the operational strategy, again, the additional, and then all these line items down here for an excess one time of 1.5. And then we would see how that rolls forward. So I am going to, I'm going to hide some of these to get these out of the way. This is just, it's just kind of, I'm going to split this screen here. That way, it just makes it easier as we roll through this. Okay, so. Okay, so.
Are you ready for me to start?
I kick it, I kick it to the dais.
Okay. I'm going to start for discussion and looking at our sales tax projection, I would like to use a 5% growth rate and see if we have three head nods for that.
Do I see two other head nods? To take the sales and use tax projected growth for 2018 from 4.5% to 5%.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
As our financial advisor, do you have any reason to believe that we would not meet the 5% growth next week, next year?
So, so in my, in my presentation, I drew a line at the five and said, I really don't support anything more than five. What I will tell you is if we are building, if we are, if we are starting on a reserve strategy to build a reserve, and we do put something into that, which we already have 2.5 million as, is anticipated, then I would have a comfort level moving just that, just that, that half a percent. I would not have a comfort level going above that as long as we have again, that, that reserve in place.
Commissioner Waller.
And again, thank you, Mr. President. Again, what does that mean in terms of real dollars?
So the amount for the, oh, see, Nikki's here with the number for me, thank you, Nikki. The amount to move it from 4.5% to 5% adds an additional 511,133. So just over half a million. That's ongoing, not one time, because even if you keep the future years at 4.5%, that would effectively increase the base revenue for 2018. So it would just be added one time. I'm still waiting on, I'm seeing questions, but I'm still waiting on two more nods to drop it in to see what it looks like.
Commissioner VanderWor.
Okay.
Sure. To, to chart number nine, we had a decrease in the growth rate, I think, of sales and use tax, 8.57% to 7%. So it kind of comes back to Commissioner Gonzalez's question again about whether we think we can, 5% is realistic. My sense is I'm, I'm interested in supporting it. I just want to make sure that, you know, we aren't overstretching. But if I don't hear anything otherwise, I think I'm going to be interested in it and I'll put my hand up for it. So anything about that chart that gives you an indication that trend will continue downward? A little bit of an anomaly or, you know, what's the situation there?
You know, right now, you know, we're looking at 7%. It could, it could go down, I mean, honestly, it could go down to as much as 6% doubtful though. And it could go up 7.5% if we have a strong, I mean, I don't know who's been out Christmas shopping this last week or so, it's a little crazy out there. So, you know, I mean, I think through the, through the holiday season, definitely robust. I know with, with Amazon collecting sales and use tax as well, you know, that's, that's huge for us because so many people do their shopping on Amazon. So I know, so I just, I know that, that, that's, that's a big indicator as well. So again, I would not support going greater than half, than 5% and increase of an additional half percent if it looks like something is trending downward and we are not going to make, and of course, we're talking about 2017 numbers, if it looks like going into 2018, we are not going to make that or we think we are on a significant decline, we'll be in front of you sooner than later. We absolutely, as soon as we have that data in front of you, and commissioners, you've seen that before, when we recognized, when we recognized the decrease in the clerks fees a couple of years ago, we were in front of you in April saying, whoa, this, this was unexpected. And so we will do that. The one thing I will say is if it does come in, for example, above the 7%, that effectively increases your base going into 2018. And so you could, in fact, you could, in fact, to still make budget, only need to have growth of 4.5%, right? As that, as that base number fluctuates. Or if it goes down, you could have to capture more.
Did you have a question?
I've seen one additional nod.
I'll head nod for 5%.
Thank you. Commissioner Little.
I greatly appreciate my colleagues. I, I am always like the old uber-ultra conservative, you know, I, because it does affect the future as well, because it starts off the, the next year at a higher rate as well. I have the mindset that I would rather see us increase our required, now that we've got the 2 million, do our, an additional reserve this year as opposed to trying to put that off into future years. And I would also just rather reappropriate extra funds if they are available at mid-year rather than building it into the budget. But that's just me, we already have three head nods, so we'll see what this looks like.
So you're saying effectively if we kept it at 4.5% and then we brought it up to, let's say it came in at 5.5%, then we would take that additional, put it into reserve versus building it in on going into the budget?
Correct.
Okay, I do, I do see three.
I count four.
You four?
There's four.
Total four.
There's four. I'm the only dissenter. I'm the only one who's saying, don't spend the money.
And I have one more question and I'll yield the floor, once you put that in there.
Okay. Sales tax from, holler at me if I mistype something because I'm busy typing. And then the amount was, and of course, this would not be changing all future years, this would still keep these years at 4.5%, but effectively that 5% would yield just over half a million dollars in 2018 that would then be an increase to that base revenue stream moving forward. So that is what you would see. So you can see then that takes that number to 2 million dollars, just over 2 million dollars. So.
Okay.
Next I am.
Last request is on, would go down to pretrial services. And after my conversation with Tim Wolken, I'd like to propose raising that to $300,000 for 2018 with the remaining balance in 2019.
Okay.
And now you will open that up for any comment or discussion. Anybody want to weigh in?
Commissioner VanderWor.
Thank you. I'm a head nod for that. And I think as opposed to the 400, it's just 300,000 because there's a gearing up to get the program going consideration. And I'd be interested in continuing to support the 400,000 from 19 on. Of course, one other thing that is important about that, and it's just a comment, but I know the team will do a great job here. There's a whole range of pretrial services that are out there. Some work well and some don't. We want to make sure that we pick the right ones that are going to produce the greatest defectivity for the county. But other than that, I'm good with the 300.
I'm looking for a third.
Commissioner Waller.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be happy to do that. You know, this is one of those areas where I think it's, it is truly an investment by the county, because I think we have potential, if we do have an effective pretrial services program, it has the potential to create savings elsewhere, fewer people incarcerated, fewer people going through the criminal justice system, things of that nature.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you. I also support that, because I think, as I'm going to continue here, one of the areas I want, do want to emphasize is our law enforcement and public safety.
Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you. So we had funds built in for pretrial services, 155,000 that was requested by Mr. Wolken. What would we do with the extra revenue if we up it to 300,000? Because what was requested was 155,000, we built that into the budget already.
That's a great question. We actually haven't addressed the revenue side of it, because there was just some discussions on potential changes to the fees and I don't, to my knowledge, those final determinations have not been made. So it would be too premature at this time to, to adjust that. They would not be significant as far as, as I understand it, the fee impact enough for us to, you know, it's not like we're looking at an additional half a million that we would need to put into a revenue line item. Once we are aware of what that looks like and that final model looks like, then we can bring that forward to you.
So is it, I'm needing to understand.
And I would have to defer to Tim, but my understanding is that there were discussions as to potential changes to the fees, but I, I don't believe those final determinations have been made.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, was significant to go from 155 to 300,000, that's a 100% increase almost. So it, was it for staff? What is it going to be used for?
Commissioners, our request actually was for 400,000. And so what we're saying at this point in time is for us to gear this up, it'll take us through about March to be able to do that. And we're hiring six additional full-time staff. And so that process will take us about three months to be able to do that. So if we could have the 300 now, that'll take us through 2018, the additional 100,000 dollars in 2019 and makes the program whole for that 400,000 investment.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you refreshing our memories, because I didn't look back into the pretrial services, what was initially requested. I thought we were funding everything that was initially requested, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought you were asking about the, the fees, the additional fees that we would collect into the program. That's where, okay.
No, I wasn't asking that.
Sorry. No, it was always a 400,000 request.
Okay. Thank you. I just thought that we'd already like built that into the budget, so.
Okay. All right. Who wants to go next?
We haven't, we haven't had a discussion about reserve yet.
Anybody wants to kick off the reserve discussion?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, so at the start of next year, after we've confirmed our 2017 dollars excess, we will have 2.5 million dollars.
That is correct.
In an emergency reserve as a starting point.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, that's larger than what I had originally requested when we were doing earlier discussions. And so at this point, I'm okay leaving it as is with the guarantee that it's, you know, at least no less than 2 million going into this with, with any other issues, but it sounds like we are at a solid 2.5 starting in 2018.
Yes, that's what we're projecting. And if for some reason, you know, I mean, and those numbers may adjust slightly, obviously, I mean, we may have revenue above and beyond that, it may go up slightly, underspending may be down, it may only be 1.9 million or it may be 2.2 million. You know, this is just our best estimate based on what we are, what we're looking at today, but we will bring those final numbers when we close out. But there is the potential that, I can't imagine it would be less than 2 million, but there's definitely strong potential that it'll be higher than the 2.5.
Okay.
And again, this is open to anything, so.
Anything.
Commissioner VanderWor.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
As long as it's legal. Just saying.
Of course.
Anything on the spreadsheet.
So I think if I'm looking at it right, at the bottom of the chart there, we've got a 1.9 to get allocated, goes further down. So I'd like to open the bidding and just start the discussion about this. A key thing that I think we need to work on, while the economy is good, is dealing with our infrastructure and doing everything we can with regard to roads and bridges. Because there's going to come a day when we won't have that money available and we'll have to ride the storm with a really small Department of Public Works budget in order to survive. So what I'm going to recommend, and then happy to have a discussion with my colleagues, is take a million of that 1.9 and put that into Department of Public Works for roads and bridges and then place the remainder as an additional reserve. It's more or less splitting that number and adding to the reserve more quickly, which gives us an opportunity for more flexibility in future years to maybe add less to the reserve. We have it today, we might not have it tomorrow. This just builds a little bit more for that reserve today. And then the other million I'm recommending, we put into road and bridge. So that's where I'll start the bidding.
I guess question I have is with regard to I-25, does that relate to, or is it earmarked for something or is it just in general or?
My, my recommendation, but open to comments from my colleagues, my recommendation is that is local road projects, that million.
Yeah, and. Commissioner Waller.
Thank you. And actually, I'd like to see another million and a half go towards the gap project. You know, I think when we went into this campaign season, I think the voters overwhelmingly spoke to us and told us that that is the single most important road project facing our region right now. And, you know, I've said all along, yeah, I was hoping that we could develop 25 million dollars in local revenue in order to do that, in order to get that project moving forward as quick as possible. And so I'd like to see another million and a half this year to get us to 7.5 million. Far as the reserve goes, I mean, I appreciate the desire to be as prudent as possible when it comes to developing the reserve, but I feel like we have a good strategy set forth in place to make sure we have the funds necessary to handle disasters moving forward. So I feel at this time, a better expenditure would be to put another million and a half. And that can either come from the excess balance or we can take money out of line item 23 there and put it into I-25. I, you know, for me, I don't know that it matters a whole lot, but I'd like to see another million and a half in the I-25 gap project.
And I support that. Commissioner Gonzalez.
I'm, I'll address first the I-25 portion and then go back to the, the roads, the general roads request. So I do believe that when we were in discussions on, when the Tabor retention was being written, that's where the option was whether to include 6 million, 5 million, 7.5 million of that portion to go to I-25. So if this part were to go to 7 or 7.5 million dollars, and I do think the public was very strong on this, I think it needs to remain within what was requested in the Tabor, because that's what I believe the original discussions were. So I would be against the general budget overages going to the 7.5, but would not necessarily be against the revision of the 6 million, 6 million there of the other projects being moved I-25. That's where the original discussions were. So I would argue that that's where it should come from, if that's what people on this board want. In regards to the second part, everybody knows I've been talking about roads since, before I got elected and since I got elected, and I think at every meeting, I've been, I've been pounding the table about, people have been talking about roads and they were talking about I-25, but in general, they were talking about our county roads and our city roads and funding that, you know, because the cities in our county are county roads as well, you know, they, we, we don't address all those needs. We do what we can in the unincorporated areas. But people have been loud and clear, whether it's I-25 or county roads, it needs to be done. So I would be okay with a million dollars. If that's too much, we can debate how much needs to go into it, but I think we need to show the people who came out on all these issues and have been very loud about addressing our infrastructure needs. So I would be in favor of supporting Commissioner VanderWor's a million dollars to, to roads in the lower areas as well. So I think we can debate the other one, but if we're going to move the I-25 to 7.5, I think it needs to have come from that same Tabor retention question, which would be, I believe, 23.
Okay, so commissioners, what I'm hearing is I'm seeing three head nods to move this to 7.5. I've, Commissioner Gonzalez spoke to taking it.
Well, the number can still be discussed here, I believe, if we're going to increase, it needs to come from that area. So I don't know, if we have additional comments before I make a solid yes on that.
Okay. But what you were proposing is taking the differential from this line item, but then there's, there's also a third and fourth discussion related to, because you still have the 1.9.
Nick, if we could maybe do this one at a time?
Right, right. That's what I'm trying to articulate.
Let's have a deliberation about, about the million dollars that's at the bottom of the chart and putting that into the, the road projects, it's line 23, so that would change that. Or maybe it's additional ongoing, sorry. Maybe it's additional ongoing, so moving a million and putting it into that for DPW. We can have a separate discussion about whether we take those funds and move them to something else with regard to I-25 and so forth, but let's talk about the million for the moment, if that's fine with my colleagues, let's finish that one up. And maybe it's even, if, if there's not support, I think it's important actually to, to do a little bit more about the reserve now, because we just don't know what future years will hold. But if there's not support on the board to put 900K into the reserve, then we should probably consider putting more than a million into, I guess it would be line item 24 or line item 23.
Commissioner Waller.
Thank you. And I, I think my only caution there, and I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but, but understand that's additional ongoing, so that, those aren't one-time dollars, that's going to be a continuing appropriation. So that million dollars is going to end up going, or whatever the number is that we put in there, is going to be ongoing for years to come, which is why, you know, I thought maybe it would be better to move that money into the I-25 gap and create more flexibility in years to come. But, you know, if we're confident that the economy is going to grow, I, you know, I, I think that's right. I'm fine with doing it that way, too. It's just, we just need to understand what it is we're actually doing.
And if I could maybe respond? And if I could maybe respond to that, I, the, you know, we need to hear from you in, maybe in January, what the numbers should look like as far as reserve. I think it's, again, I've made the comment, it's probably at least 5 million, it's probably also less than 10, but we need to hear from you. To the extent that we might put that 900 and change into reserve at this point, it actually doesn't change any flexibility about next year, putting more, you know, putting less money in reserve, because we did it a year early, and putting more money into something else, like either local road projects or I-25 in a future year. So if the economy continues good, we would always have that flexibility in future years. There's no need for additional money at this point, I don't think, in 18 for I-25 gap, but that's a point of debate that we can have. So I'm just saying that we could put it in there. And the thing about it being in there is, if we have a disaster in 18, it's hard to know how much we would consume, but we've got to have enough money in there to prime the pump for the overtime, and it's going to take some time to get in, to get state or federal money back into the county for reimbursement. And we just need to make sure we don't find ourselves caught in a situation where we have something big and we run out of local reserve money. So anyway, it's just my point. But again, if the board doesn't have an interest, you know, we can go with something different.
Commissioner Waller.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And I think one of the important things here is, you know, there is, we've done a fairly significant increase, I think, to Public Works and into roads and bridges projects in the coming years. And I think the ability to be able to effectively spend those dollars is something else we need to consider. So, Mr. Reed, I would appreciate to hear from you. Can you take on that extra spending now and effectively use it?
Not within the next year, Commissioner. I don't have the bandwidth. And for me to stand up and tell you I don't, I can't use the money is kind of tough for me, because obviously I have a great need, but to be honest with you, we still have a lot of recovery projects that are, that are just killing us. And we've had at least a 45% turnover in engineers. So at this point, I just don't have the bandwidth to effectively put that into place, if that's what you're asking. I'll be in much better shape, I think, in 19 than I will in 18.
Are you, Mr. Reed, so, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're, go ahead, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. President, I forgot. So, Jim, so are, you could not use an extra $500,000 or $250,000, are you?
Commissioner, I could use an extra 500 million. The bottom line is I have to be able to expend it in a timely manner, and I think that's, the more we hold on to money, the less it buys for me, so it's probably better to move forward and let us get, right now, we're still doing recovery projects, and I think that was part of our Tabor.
And that's fine, but I, so I'm going to ask you a very honest answer, and I want a, an answer, because I do want to provide some more money for roads.
Absolutely.
Can you absorb some money this year and put it to use? And if you can, would that be 250,000? I mean, it sounds like you can't do a million.
Right.
Are you able to use, utilize it, 250, 50? If you say zero, I'm going to believe you, but I also don't want any additional pressure, because I think you have people here who are willing to address road issues this year. And I'm willing to support you on that, if you can absorb some of this for roads, because the county feedback I'm getting is that roads is important.
Absolutely. The reclamation process that we, project that we presented, that I could easily do, and that's about 200,000, 250,000. I could do that, but as far as a million or more, I think that would be very difficult for me to, it's a process. By the time you get your permits and everything else that you're doing, it's just, I don't know that I can do it within that 12-month period, so.
Well, then, I will, I will ask for a friendly adjustment from Commissioner Van De Wueren in, based on what I'm hearing here, without addressing any other specific issues, that for ongoing, 250,000, it seems appropriate, based on the feedback here that I'm receiving from our Director of Public Works.
So a procedural question, I think, for Nicola, is have we held road and bridge project money or other department money in reserve, knowing that we can't spend it today? But then, that's, that would be direction for a particular department to gear up and plan for those projects, and the money would just not be consumed necessarily, in this particular case, not consumed in 18, but would be maybe consumed in 19?
Yes, absolutely. You can, you can hold, you can hold them into reserve. What comes to mind here is some of the federal projects that Public Works has pending, at the point that those, the point that those come to fruition and we get to the point that we would actually break ground with those, you'd want to ensure that you have the match in place. So you could still, even though what Mr. Reed is saying, he doesn't have the capacity to spend that this next year, you could still put that into reserve as a local match for federal projects that we know are in process that will be coming down the pipeline.
And that might be perhaps a, having, having the dollars available to pursue, whatever you would call it, an indication or a promise to the, to state or fed that we have that money in reserve, therefore, we're pursuing these grants and we're hoping to turn that million into 2 million or 3 million or whatever it is. So maybe here is, I'll just, I don't know if there's interest in putting more money in the reserve, perhaps that's an important question, but here, here I'm kind of at, for line 20, for line 24, take the 1.9 and put it all in line 24 and hold it in reserve for road and bridge, for infrastructure. And there could be then an additional discussion about whether that ends up going to I-25, if we need to add more local match in order to make the program succeed, or it goes into local roads, because we know we have a backlog, a big backlog, a big backlog in local roads. So it, maybe we end up, if there's no support for additional funds in reserve, maybe we put it all in line 24.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Maybe I'm confused. I, I didn't think we were going to be asked to, how would you spend all 1.9 million dollars? There's a couple of issues, I think there's still three or four issues that are going to come up. I want $100,000 for sheriff, but I think right now.
Perhaps we should hold off and listen to.
Hey, let's ask $250,000 to roads, and then get to the next issue. I want $100,000 for the sheriff, law enforcement. So I'm not trying to, because you're trying to put it all in one question, all spend 1.9 million dollars. I'm trying to get to the things we can agree on, and I think right now, it sounds like $250,000 for roads, and then we can get to the next issue. And at the end, what we have, yeah, I fully put it to, to the reserves, but you're asking us to put one thing and then the rest of it into the reserves, and I think.
I'm good. Let's listen to the other ideas.
But that will be mine, so 250 for roads, and because I'm just trying to describe, my thought process was, I think we would go to the next topic, and I want $100,000 for sheriff.
Perfect. Let's table that, and then let's hear what other proposals we have and come back to that one.
Very good. We're hearing multiple things, and I would really like to bifurcate all of them and address them one at a time.
Yes.
We have multiple strategies as well as what I'm hearing, so.
So who wants to?
Is there something else we'd like to throw on the table?
I'd come back to the gap project and move another 1.5 out of line item 23 into 22.
Do I see?
Oh, from 23 to 22?
So that would be from the, all keeping it, keeping it
Okay, I agree with that.
Contained within Tabor. So that would be moving the retention, the I-25 gap, from 6 million to 7.5 million, and then moving the, the other road projects from 6 million to 4.5 million. Do I see three nods for that? I see two.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
I'm going to give you a head nod with the, with the clarification that I may change my mind at the end if there's not sufficient remaining for a project or two that I have interest, specific interest in. And I will just defer as well, if, because some of this money may be going to some of the local
Right.
roads issues, if that alleviates some of the funding for the local roads, county roads, that we may have to adjust that at the end. But, so I will give you a head nod right now, but I don't want that to end up being something that reduces the county roads effort, so, okay.
And we'll have, we'll have an ultimate final.
Commissioner Van De Wueren. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And for the record, I disagree with this. We don't know that we need 7.5 million in I-25. We have made an enormous amount of progress, thanks to the efforts of the entire Commission here, and thanks in particular to Commissioner Waller with regard to the I-25 gap widening. But in the end, we still have an opportunity with just 6 million to get this fully funded. So I see no reason for putting any money, any additional money into I-25. My sense is, we need to wait and not do that today. We need to wait, because we don't know where the negotiations are going to go down the road, and if there ends up being a shortfall, then that is a very legitimate discussion at that point about a local contribution from the county. But at this point, we're not there, we don't know. And so I am not interested in doing that, and I'm just saying that for the record. I guess I'm the two that's dissenting on the idea at this point.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
All right. Well, you know, going back in this discussion, I don't remember if we were talking six, seven, or, how about we put seven for right now, we've returned to this, in the same meeting, is that okay with my other two?
We can revisit all of this. Right now, we're just throwing it up here and we'll look at it, we're like, well, let's do this. Right now, we're just trying to get a general sense of.
So what effectively we did is, we kept within the same Tabor retention, we just reallocated from one, from one pocket to another, effectively the I-25, we, from the, from the local roads to the I-25 gap. But you still have up here, Commissioners, you still have 1.9 million, so you could put 1.5 million into this line item and effectively keep this component whole back to the original 6 million. I mean, it's effectively what, what you can do.
What I feel most comfortable is, how about 7 million right now, and we can come back to this in, in the future. Is that okay? Is that appropriate?
Okay.
Because that's what I'll give the head nod to right now, is 7 million.
Commissioner Waller.
Yeah, I mean, if that's how we get to three head nods, but I, but I think that it's right to do 7.5. You know, this is the single biggest public safety and economic, or one of the biggest public safety and economic issues facing our region right now. The numbers are complete. The, you know, can't tell you how many different meetings I've been to with CDOT to talk about how this gets done. $350 million project, 250 coming from the state, 65 from an INFRA grant, and then 35 from local governments, 25, 15 of which I'm hoping to develop from El Paso County, another 10 from the RTA, and 10 from our colleagues in Douglas County. I mean, I think those numbers aren't disputed. That's where we are. And I think, you know, we need to send that message to the state and federal government that we are interested and willing to participate in making sure this project gets completed. And I just read an article today coming out of the Trump administration saying, look, if you're going to want your federal highway project done, it is going to take local dollars in order to make that happen. And so that's why I'd like to see 7.5. If Commissioner Gonzalez doesn't agree to that, I'll, you know, if it takes reducing that another 500,000 to get to three head nods, I think that's right to do, but, or we can do that, but I think that we need to be serious about putting local dollars to this project.
All right, we'll leave it at 7.5 for right now. I'm going to, of course, reserve
Thank you.
opportunity to, to discuss this based on other options.
Commissioner Lilton.
Thank you. And well, I do believe that the voters did indicate how important this is. Personally, I would prefer to see the million and a half rolled into a reserve, and if we needed that match to come back and go, oh my gosh, this will put us over the finish line, but I just, I think we should leave it at 6 million, maybe put it into the reserve, say if we need to come back and draw that down, we could. So it would be my preference.
And Commissioner Van De Wueren.
Just another point that I think is important to make, we have, and certainly Jim can verify this, we've got at least $200 million worth of deferred maintenance in local road projects, and we've got to fix as much of that as possible. This is why I feel very strongly about those dollars going into that line, because we've got to put every penny we can in there. And I believe that all the Commissioners here support that in one way or another. It's really more a question of what is the number, as opposed to the concept itself. But I feel very strongly that while we have this budget, we need to put those dollars in there, because if we leave a large part of that unaddressed, when we have the next economic downturn, we will be in a double whammy situation of insufficient funds for road infrastructure and insufficient funds for salaries for employees, and we'll be, we'll be hurting in both places. So now's the time, now's the strategy, to fix that $200 million as much as possible. So with regard to the 7.5 and line 22, for discussion purposes, you can leave it in there, but I stand on my position.
Okay. And again, we want to make sure we get them all out there, and we can, once we have all the proposals out there, we can revisit, but once we get three head nods, let's move to the next issue, and before we say we're done, we'll take up additional arguments. So what's next?
Well, I'm going to, I think we, I'm going to ask that we defer on how much money then goes to ongoing additional infrastructure, as our Director considers money that was moved out of the, some of the Tabor road projects, and that how that lessens up, or makes available funding that he could use. So I'm going to ask for him to come back towards the end, given you, because obviously he can't absorb that, because some of that money that we just moved would have been local projects. And so I want him to do some quick research here, and what does he need to offset that that he can utilize, because I want money to go to local county roads. So my, my request now is $100,000 for the sheriff's budget. He had done some savings, and so his budget from the, this portion of the budget had been reduced $50,000. And one of the, the second thing I do here outside of county roads issues are issues with marijuana. How do we address that? And I know, I know some of the sheriff's budget has gone up separately from his sales tax, but that sales tax may not be here, or it may not be the same amount that, that comes in, and it's, you know, potentially could go away in the future. So I do think that we need a little extra money to the sheriff's department, and so I, my request is $100,000 to the sheriff.
So for clarification, $100,000 for the sheriff. Commissioner Lilton.
So just a couple of questions, and I'm sure the sheriff or any of his representatives here might be able to address this, because I'm looking under his presentation, critical needs were none. So the question is the same thing as, you know, Jim pointed out for Public Works. If extra funds were allocated, as, you know, suggested, would there be adequate staff to be able to utilize those funds effectively to address some of the concerns?
I need to give a point of clarification, just because I've heard two of you say this now, as far as if we were to do additional dollars into the road infrastructure while this is ongoing, keep in mind, we are, we are, we are tearing this up. So if you were to put an additional, let's say, million dollars into this, that doesn't mean that then you have to increase this to 9 million and this to 9.5 million. So in this particular year, because this item is not fully funded yet, and it's going to take several years to get there, this would be treated in effect like a one-time. So if you were to put a million here, again, that does not mean we have to increase all of the rest of these by a million. So I know you've, a couple of you have spoke to that, increasing the ongoing, you would still have it, and then, and then you would still address the 2019 excess in and of itself, if that helps clarify.
Commissioner Waller.
And, yeah, and thank you for that. I think that's actually a great clarification that we need to keep in mind. And certainly, this, you know, increasing, increasing the, in high-impact road infrastructure investment in 2019 from, you know, a million extra in 18 to 8 million extra, that gives Mr. Reed and his department the opportunity to ramp up operations, and that 8 million in 2019, 8.5 million in 20, those are all projections, and also based out of the, the Tabor retention ballot initiative that just passed as well, correct?
Yes. Are you asking about this million here?
I'm asking about all of those lines, that, that whole line moving forward, so the million
This line item.
The eight, yep, the 8 million in 19.
The reset.
Yeah, all based on the reset.
That's correct. This is all based on the reset.
In the ballot initiative.
That is correct.
And so we are addressing, or, you know, we're putting a lot more towards those infrastructure needs moving forward at a time when the Public Works Department has the opportunity to ramp up the ability to be able to appropriately utilize those funds. ramp up the ability to be able to appropriately utilize those funds.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Lilton.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just the question was, do you want to have the sheriff's office address that, as to whether they could utilize the funds or not?
Hello, Commissioners. Commander Roy Ball, Sheriff's Office. My understanding is, Commissioner Gonzalez, you would like to give us, give the sheriff's office another $100,000 to combat marijuana. Is that correct? I can absolutely assure you, we could use that $100,000. My last assignment was Metro VNI, and I was in charge of the marijuana team, and we know there's 500 groves, illegal groves in unincorporated El Paso County, well, including the city of Carlos Springs. So I guess that's all of El Paso County. That can go a long way, whether it's overtime for our tactical team to take down those groves in conjunction with Metro VNI. So the answer, Commissioners, is yes, we could use that.
So you have the staffing to be able to fulfill the request for that need?
Specifically for marijuana, yes.
Mr. President.
Commissioner VanderWort. Thank you. Yeah, and according to the charts from the sheriff, he did not express any specific critical needs, but in his talk, in his speech, he talked about three unfunded priorities. And I wrote this down, I wrote this note, and it came from what he said. One of them is marijuana, one of them is homelessness, and one of them is mental health.
That is correct.
Yes. So with regard to homelessness, the sheriff's office has been taking out of hide, out of their own budget, the extra work that they've had to do to do the postings and to have security there when we do homeless camp cleanups. This is not a budgeted item, as far as I understand, in the sheriff's office. And then you have some mental health shortfalls. I think that might be a reference to the jail. And then, of course, we have the marijuana issue as well. So why I bring this up is I think the sheriff has, he mentioned it, these three unfunded priorities, and I am willing to support the $100,000 for the sheriff's office, assuming that we don't have any other budget configurations that we have to worry about with regard to that, since it's their own budget. So if we're good there, then I would support that.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
And just from the last meeting, when the sheriff was here to speak on the critical needs, I did ask, I didn't give him a dollar amount, but I did ask him specifically on the record if he could utilize that, and he gave me a definite yes at the time. I didn't give a dollar amount, but he gave that same conclusion, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want...
I'm looking for a third on that. Okay.
Did you get the direction that you need when you were providing clarification on the ongoing road? Was that just...
That was just, that was just, I wanted to make sure that everybody was clear that if we added a million here, that didn't mean we had to increase all the rest of these by a million.
I didn't know if you needed a decision or not.
No, I just wanted to, I just, for discussion purposes, I wanted to make sure.
Thanks. And Nicola, just going back, just going back up to that line item where you just were, 24, 23?
Yes.
I mean, so the question would be then, because that does say additional ongoing, if there were extra money allocated, would it not be in line 23 as opposed to 24, where it was just one time? Even though we're, you know, Mr. Reed's saying that they can't really utilize it because they don't have staff and/or...
Well, what we were doing, Commissioner, with this, to make it clear to the citizens, this amount you can see down here equals the 14.548. So we're trying to just keep these separate, because that's addressing the one time within the Tabor. So that was very clear in all our documents. And then this would be an additional amount. And then you had expressed interest that you wanted it to go to...
So basically, it would be additional or ongoing. It's not additional ongoing, it's additional or ongoing, basically, if you're saying that.
Well, we're increasing it ongoing, so this would be the additional amount. But what I'm saying is, is what I'm saying is that you still have to, you still have to phase this amount in based on what you have available. I just, it was the wording that came from a couple of the Commissioners. I just wasn't sure that, I mean, I wanted to make it very clear that we were not going to insert another line that showed an additional $1 million across. I'm not sure if I'm answering the question.
Not really.
I'm sorry.
Well, it says, because it says additional ongoing, but what you're saying is, is it's not really additional ongoing.
It is. Because they do, it's additional because they do not have it in their base budget right now. And it's ongoing because the financial roadmap does, is not addressing it, excuse me, as a one-time, otherwise you would see it zeroed out in future years. So this would increase the base up to the 13.7 additional on top of the 2.3, which gets you the 16 million that was requested, excuse me. And then during that, this timeframe, we would be able to get the asset management system in place to get an assessment of what that 16 million really should be.
I thought I heard you say that, I thought I just heard you say earlier that if we added an extra million in line 24 for 2018, that it does not increase 2019 to 9 million and then increase 2020 to...
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So which one is it?
We're trying to get there, so we just don't increase it as much.
It's still an ongoing increase to their budget, it's just a matter of what the amount is each year in and of itself.
But not to exceed that.
But not to exceed that.
That's right.
Thank you. That was the clarification we needed.
Thank you. Sorry.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
And just for clarification, on line 23, if we specifically add additional dollars there, that was for very specific projects versus general road maintenance, and that's where we just have to be careful. We want to put it there. If the director wants, prefers it there, then that might be appropriate, but just understand if it goes there, that is the very specific projects versus general road maintenance.
Good point. Okay. Keep going. What else?
I put one, I'm going to have that one.
Okay. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Well, then I would, based on the recent couple...
Nothing for fishing. Nothing.
Sorry, Tim, I was trying to get you, I was trying to get you to fishing grant. But, you know, the last couple of weeks, and even just the last couple of days, oh, I mean, sorry, months, and even the last couple of days, we have been hearing things about some issues with, on the public health side, and I'm just wondering if there might be, just be a few extra dollars that can get us some survey, some sort of support to start addressing some of this hep C, some of our crisis. So I don't know if we can get our public health director down here. Could he absorb a little bit, even if it's just for surveys, money, to get better understanding of where we are with these issues, whether that's $25,000, $50,000? It might be something that doesn't do much for us, but if it helps us get better survey information in our board meetings. I did run across some questions that I asked that people were not able to get information from some of the patients who were coming in, and I don't know if that could be maybe supported by some small amount of funding that could help address other surveys, or maybe getting matching for some sort of grant. So with something like 25,000, I know you were talking about this offline, about potential, you know, does it benefit or not? I mean, I know you wanted something maybe next year's a bigger project, but could a small amount of money be beneficial to help us start surveying those issues?
And yes, Dan Martindale, Public Health Director, the answer is yes. I think that we could do that. Obviously, like you mentioned, I would like to come to the Board of County Commission for a larger discussion in terms of 2019, for three or four positions that I think we really need at the Health Department for 2019. I know, I know. Behavioral health, epidemiology, and community health education. But that's another discussion. So anything you're willing to give us, we can put to good use, and I would suspect that that would be utilized within our communicable disease program.
And that, from the discussions I've been getting over the last several months, is that is a great need, and it was highlighted yesterday, I think, in the discussions on what do we do, even if it's just basically surveying the, our county to see what we can do in future years. So I would like some amount of money, if we want to discuss how much that could be. Like I said, at this point, we're just trying to really, to map, to see what, where we're at. So if it's 25,000, 50,000, I think anything at this point, according to our Public Works, I mean, the Public Health Director, I think could be a benefit. So I'd open that to discussion.
How much are you asking for?
I'd support 50.
Then I will ask for 50,000.
We'll open that up for discussion.
Do we have three head nods?
Okay, how about 25,000? For, I mean, just based on what I've seen, we need to be able to get some surveys and get some information out there, and I think it's a good faith to our community.
I'm certainly willing to do that, and put it on here for discussion, because I know you want to come back around again and take a look at all of it. So let's put that on there for discussion, but she's occupied right now.
50.
Or 25.
He asked for 25, and then you said 50. I want to go to Vegas with you.
We'll do the 25 then.
All right, I'll support 25. 25.
I think Commissioner Gonzalez would like to put it up there for, at least get three head nods for discussion purposes.
Was it ongoing or one time? One time? What do we call it? Communicable diseases?
What are you calling that?
25,000 for communicable diseases. Well, that doesn't sound right.
Yeah. Don't want that on the spreadsheet, please. Thank you.
25,000 to combat communicable diseases.
Well, yes.
Commissioner VanderWort.
On that, I'm looking at the charts. I do have a note here with regard to Mr. Martindale's presentation. One of the budgetary challenges he mentions is carrying out emergency response plans for large disease outbreaks. And there's a challenge in that about how many points of dispensing for diseases and how many public locations would be used. So I would be, it seems to me like there's more planning that does need to be done in that arena with regard to a contingency that relates to a health outbreak. If the money that we approve today could also be part of a consideration for that planning purpose, then I'll support the 25K. But it sounds to me like there's planning that still needs to be done that isn't completed.
To me, that falls into an emergency fund. You get it and use it if you need it, if there is something, rather than just allocating the funds without a specific need. My own, my thoughts.
To that point, I would be interested, I don't know exactly how this would be expressed. It's not necessarily a contingency plan, per se, but it would be contingency planning, and that's working with OEM and those kinds of things. So maybe that's a topic of a conversation for another day about how to do that effectively.
Are you waiting for us? You look like you want to say something.
Well, Mr., yeah, Mr. Reed's come back down, and, you know, Commissioner Gonzalez asked for a follow-up. And given that, given that there are, as we know, significant hundreds of millions of backlog, we know it was stated, you know, the capacity to spend the funding on those projects, but there are other programs that can be invested in to help move that, move that along, so that when we're at the point in time that we can actually break ground on some of those projects, we're ready to roll. And so I just, I asked Mr. Reed, based on Commissioner Gonzalez's request to come...
Well, before you, before you answer that, were we finished with the 25? Are you comfortable with the 25? And again, this is up here for discussion purposes, so that we will then go back. Okay.
Actually, if I might, on that line, I know it's just 25Ks, and we're spending a lot of time on that one line, but it's, for me, it's combat communicable diseases, but it's also about contingency planning.
Now you can.
I can't, thank you. I had an opportunity to talk to the county engineer up here a few minutes ago after talking, after your question, Commissioner Gonzalez. I can spend the 1 million basically on our Las Vegas drop structure almost immediately this year. And then the other thing that we have is, I think we brought a presentation to you about the BOMAG machine, which around $300,000 to $500,000 to get that project going. So that's something that we can't complete this year. My thought process was, I've got 6 million coming from Tabor, and I'm thinking, okay, I've got to get those projects rolling. You want to add another million? But that's correct, yeah. That's absolutely correct.
So we can put some of that back in there.
So what do you, what is your, what can you use, then? So to ask, in this case, I'm actually asking you for a number to put back in, whether it's in 23 or 24, it sounds like, even if it's for one time. What are you asking for?
If it's a one-time, the 1.5 million would be beneficial to us, extremely beneficial to us for gravel roads, as well as the drop structure at Las Vegas.
And how much do we have left? I can't see the bottom.
1.8. You can see it in the 2019 line, the 2019 line.
We have 1.8.
And then I am, I will ask for the 1.5 and hopefully get some head nods, but that will be my request. And once again, I will reiterate that this is, has been the number one issue that I have had in calls and complaints. When I send emails, 80% of the emails I get go to his office, because those are the issues that I get from constituents. So that's my request for roads, 1.5, one time.
I see two other nods.
Not here.
Yep. Okay.
And then that leaves 300,000 for reserve.
I think that's where that needs to go.
And just so you know, Commissioners, we don't always have to spend every penny as well, just so you know.
Yeah. See, Jim, you know, I wanted, I wanted to wait till you got all the way up there, because I know you're counting steps, so.
Yes, sir.
Just a question, because you know some of the issues that we're having up in the northern portion with roads gravel. With what you have there, do you have funding to be able to address those issues, or is that something that we need to address? Because I've had several requests with regard to Miami Academy and those types. Is that already planned, or do we need, do I need to plan for something?
I don't know that I have a complete cost for that, to give you an honest answer on that. I'll have to check with the county engineer, see where we're at on the total cost, but that is something we will have to address. Hopefully, we can work that within our budget. Some of the stuff up north you're talking about is actually state roads, so we're, we have to work that with the state.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now, let's open it up for everybody to general discussion, and I'll start with Commissioner VanderWort.
Thank you. I'm still concerned about the movement of the 1.5 million from line 23 to line 22. I stand on my previous position. I think it's premature to add that in, because we might actually get a fully funded project with the current great work that has been done so far, and we don't know where we stand. If we, if we, for example, do not get the infra grant, then we're in a completely different scenario, and we won't know about the outcome of that infra grant for some time. So I recommend returning that, and I encourage my colleagues to leave it at 6 and 6, but I will stand with where we end up with head nods on the point.
Any other comments?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
You know, and I concur with you, I have the same conflict and issues with that, but I think in terms of how we have to get the three, we have to get two and approve budget. But I agree, I think we have issues there, I think, I do have concerns, but overall, the things that, looking at this budget, what did people tell me? People told me, infrastructure and roads for our county and our public safety. And I think we, in my mind, I've done what I promised, which is I addressed roads. I gave, you know, I actually, I think I was pretty honest. I said, you know, Mr. Reed, what do you need? You know, that's probably very rare that somebody's told, give me the number, and then, and I'll give you the head nod. And so I feel very good that we addressed the county roads issues as best possible on this budget. ways in addressing, even if it's just a little bit of money to the sheriff to help combat his effort on the marijuana issue, I think is a benefit to our entire county, because I keep hearing that. And, you know, if he comes back next year and he needs more money to do that next year, you know, I'm going to be open to addressing and listening to those concerns, as we do for all our directors. So I appreciate everything that's gone into this. And yeah, this is tough. This is very tough. I told people, this is probably the most nervous I'd been on the dais was a couple hours ago when we started this, because this is important. And, you know, I look at all these numbers and I asked-- I was thinking out loud earlier, yeah, I still have some things I need to, I think, adjust and understand of this, but I'm happy, I think, overall with what we've done today.
So does that mean head nod to leave line 20? I think that's what that means, is what you're saying.
Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you. Clearly, the females are in charge of the budget in our households, right? So I'm all for not spending down to zero. So I always like to have plenty of reserves in hand, especially since we increased from 4.5% to 5% already, and they're taking that into account. I appreciate the extra operational savings of putting $328,000 into reserves. Nicola, if you could scroll down. I do also agree and concur with Commissioner VanderWorff. I believe that we need to just stay with what the voters' intentions were of 6 and 6 in the beginning, and then we will see if we need to use emergency funds in the future for something that will help us, like, get past that threshold for something for the I-25 gap corridor, because I don't want to miss that opportunity, because the great work that has been done. But to encumber it now, I think is-- I just don't want it to go that direction. I am in agreement with community services, both of them, for the Criminal Justice Planner and the Pretrial Services Program to help us get over that goal, because I think it is going to be a cost savings in the future. I can live with the public health, not excited about it. And I do agree, if the sheriff's office says that they have the bandwidth to deal with the extra $100,000 to combat the marijuana, the illegal marijuana grows out east, we certainly need to address that, because we hear of that on a regular basis at PPACG, Pike's Peak Area Council of Governance as well. I'm happy to put some in with facilities, facilities that was already built into the budget, but-- so those are just my comments. I can live with that. I'd love to see more in reserve for us to be able to draw down from, if necessary, but I can live with it, with the way that it is, with the other adjustment at the top of the 6 and 6.
Commissioner Waller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to, instead of kind of talking about it in the negative, talk about it in what I hope is the clear, direction-positive way. You have my head nod to adopt it as we have-- as it appears on the spreadsheet now. I think that's appropriate. I think, you know, our charge moving forward is to make this community a better, safer place to live and work, and I think that, you know, no matter how we feel about certain dollar amounts going in certain areas, I think that we all, or at least I hope that we all agree that this accomplishes that to one degree or another. So with that, it's, you know, certainly have my approval to head nod to adopt as we have it in the spreadsheet now.
And one thing I will do is I will open it up for some brief comment from anybody that wants to limit it to three minutes before we give direction to go forward with that. So if there's anybody that wants to comment on this point in time, if you come down, I'll give you three minutes to come on down.
And Commissioners, just really quickly while they're coming down, you know, even though we have minor negatives here, we're not going to sweat 200,000 in four years from now, that's for sure. I mean, obviously, that's going to fluctuate, and I'm sure that will be addressed. So just to put that out there.
Does that include your-- does that include any other staff that's here that wants to address anything?
And I'll open it up to anybody that wants to come down and talk.
This is your time to fight for dollars.
Yes.
Hi, Deborah Stoutmeinger. When you were talking about the Health Department and the study items, one of the things I did hear when the needle discussion was going on, which I'm totally against, right? But one of the things they were saying is that when they were coming in for certain things, that they were complaining that they couldn't get into the programs because there was two, three-week waiting list or more. That's one thing that is just as important as surveys. So you might put that on your list of little extras for the Health Department, because that is money that sometimes comes from federal, but those programs are all being kind of squished down a little bit. So maybe if you've got the leeway, that might be something to put on the current agenda until we can get a handle on the epidemic between the marijuana and the opioids and the heroin and everything else that's going on right now. That's-- we're in the middle of a maelstrom with that. So in addition to better enforcement on the marijuana and trying to encourage senators to do at least what other states have done to control the THC levels, which is an addiction factor, I'm sorry. Forty years of watching this with people, and I know what I know on the streets, that those programs, both for the schools, junior high and up, and even in grade school, because I know kids coming from households as young as seven and eight years old that are into the drugs because they're in the households, those are important, not just studying it, but getting the information out, including those school ages, and making those programs available to the adults with the homeless population popping up 50% every single year. There's got to be a handle on it somehow. Take advantage of that when you can. Thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Deborah. And I do appreciate the comments, and I kind of meant to allude to the opioid crisis when I was also talking about the other infectious disease. That's not an infectious disease, but lots of issues going on there, which is why I did make the request for some sort of funding for studies, because this is something that's statewide a crisis and nationwide a crisis. And, you know, we have to do, even if it's just a little bit, to get a start on addressing these issues, which are very important, so.
Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you. Well, and I think the reference to that was, it was, there was a waiting period, but it wasn't necessarily for the Department of Health. It was for counseling services that were privately-- private counseling services. So the Department of Health doesn't provide any of those services. However, you know, it was certainly one of the things that I discussed with some of the folks yesterday after the Needle Exchange Program, was, you know, having, rather than a program, having a drop-off center, where people don't get needles, but they can just simply drop them off and not, you know, be-- there's no problem there. So I think that that would be important as well for these funds.
Well, you're up. By the time you get back there, just sign in, and then you have three minutes, if you want. Where do I sign in? Right there. Right by you? There should be a sign-up sheet there. Oh, okay. That was covered up. And if there's anybody else that wants to speak during this time, if you could make your way down, other than that, we'll bring it back up here after that.
I'm Dr. Charles Corey. I head up the Equal Justice Foundation. One of our principal projects has been trying to help out veterans. In 2008, we helped pioneer the veteran court here. 2010, working with Representative Marsha Looper, we helped get an enabling bill through to provide-- let any chief judge in the state form a veteran court. Since 2010, with the help of the sheriff's office, been tracking veteran arrests. In those little over seven years now, we've tracked the arrests of 11-- about 11,000 veterans, at least 11,000, because veterans get arrested in other counties and don't show up in the CJC. That's 13%, at least, of all the veterans in the county have been arrested. And I'm doing this because there are broad implications to the problem with the pretrial We did get a veteran pod in the jail that holds about 72 veterans. The average veteran population in CJC is about 150 veterans. So we've got a problem with the numbers in the jail. One of the problems that's come to my attention is many of the veterans would like to have a jury trial, but if they can't afford bail, they're being held in jail until the day of trial, which typically is three to five months. That's at about $3,000 a month to hold them in jail. A personal experience with this, my son's a disabled Marine and got in trouble with the Golden Sheriff Police in 2016, and we went through it in JFCO and pretrial services up there. They do a lot more than just ankle monitors, which we'd like to see, an ankle monitor on these veterans that can't afford jail. And the problem with that, of course, is that you've got to have the people in the pretrial services to do the monitoring. With my son, they monitored the UAs. They also called me when there was a problem. It was a very valuable service. Last week, I brought up this idea of using ankle monitors rather than simply keeping them in jail with the district attorney. That's when I found out that he'd requested this 400,000.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. I mean, and again, we were just specifically talking about line items, but I want to make sure that you have Tim Wilkins' contact, because we do have a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and this is great information for that, to participate in that. I don't know if you're participating in our committees, but we're trying to address some of those particular issues, and we're going to have another hearing on this budget next-- our next meeting.
Well, I was told that this would be the budget hearing--
We're going to have--
--for that 400,000. Am I correct?
Yes, and we've--
And that's why I'm addressing this line item.
And you were given three minutes to do that.
All right, thank you.
And then you can come back again, because right now, once we have it here, we're trying to get a consensus that this is what's going to go forward, then put the public on notice that this is what's going to come forward. You'll have another opportunity to weigh in on whether or not you agree or disagree with that. We're just trying to get a general feeling from people right now if they support where we're at, and that 300,000 is in there right now, not 400,000, because they can't fully obligate the 400,000 for 2018. But the plan is to ramp it up to 400,000.
All right, thank you. And may I ask Commissioner VanderWorff, who's my representative, to notify me when that hearing comes up?
Yeah, and we'll finish that up. You'll hear us talk about when this is going to come forward again before you even leave here today.
All right, thank you.
Well, hey, I've got a quick question for you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you for your work in this area. I was co-sponsor of that bill that Representative-- then Representative Looper ran in 2010, and I think that that has done some absolutely outstanding stuff for our community, being able to give judges and courts the flexibility to be able to handle veterans in a different way, certainly knowing the special needs they have after having deployed so many times. But my question is, I mean, you understand that we have put, as Commissioner Glenn said, $300,000 towards pretrial services. You know, we've upped the amount that they were originally asking for, and we haven't fully funded it to 400,000, only because they can't implement all of that 400,000 at this point. Are you comfortable with the amount that we've put there, or is it-- would you like to see some other number?
I'll leave that to the discretion of the district attorney, that he has to hire the people, and he's much better informed on what his needs are than I am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President? Commissioner VanderWorff.
Yes, thank you very much. Dr. Corey, thank you very much for being here. For those of you that don't know, Dr. Corey is supporting the Department of Human Services. I think you're sitting on one of the boards. You're certainly working with Julie Crowe and Health Services and so forth. And then you obviously, because you're here this morning, you're an active citizen and you are interested in these pretrial services. I do appreciate your-- very much your being here and the support that you've given to the district attorney's office and to the concept of these other pretrial services, because it doesn't make any sense, as you would well know, to incarcerate somebody that shouldn't be incarcerated. It also doesn't make any sense to let someone out that maybe needs to stay incarcerated. So these services, I think, are-- we're at a point where I think they're fully funded for what can be executed this year, and we're going to get a whole lot better at that. And I appreciate your support and your endeavors over the years in trying to fight these issues and make our community a better place, so thanks.
Thank you, and I'd like to also express my thanks to the sheriff's office, who's been very helpful in dealing with these issues and providing the information about veteran arrests.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Is there anybody else that wants to talk about the budget here before we bring it back up? Okay, if we could remove the time box, and now, everybody in the audience, if you can take a look at the numbers, and you can scroll down just so Dr. Corey can actually see where that item is. That's where we've referenced that, and again, that would be $400,000 if we actually had the ability to do that for-- in 2018, but you can see that that's-- that has been built in. So now, I'll open it up to my colleagues that, based on what's in the 2018 column, we now need three head nods to either-- to go forward, to let the public know that this is the proposed 2018 budget for adoption. So we will-- can now open that up for final comments. I'll start with Commissioner VanderWorff. You want to make your pitch one more time?
I don't know how effective that would be. You know what I would make the pitch on. What I can say is I still would recommend my colleagues move the 1.5 back into line, I think it's 24, or maybe it's 22 to 23. And there's no need for me to reiterate the points that I made before, but just keep in mind that the money that goes into line 22 is held in reserve and is not necessarily going to be expended in the immediate future. And we don't really know, at the end of the day, what we actually will need to spend on that as far as local contribution for the county. Now, having said that, if there's still three head nods on this dais, to keep those dollars as they are, I will give a head nod also to the budget as currently represented. I would hope my colleagues would consider otherwise, but I will go forward with this budget if we cannot get to something different with other colleagues here on the dais. Thanks.
Commissioner Littleton.
I just-- I concur with Commissioner VanderWorff's statements.
Yeah, this is it. Well, Nicola needs final clarification that this is what's going to go forward, so she does need three affirmative--
I think, as a holding place, I think, yes, this is a budget that should move forward, but I do want to hear the public's input on this, because this is obviously not set in stone, and so I recommend the public to come out at the next-- whatever the next voting meeting, I believe it's on the 12th, but whatever that's our approval meeting is, that the public come out to hear, or to let us know what they think about this budget, so. But I think we should move forward with this budget.
And I do, too.
Me, too.
So you have three?
And Commissioners, I will just say, you know, you're making me a little bit nervous about the 12th. Our statutory deadline to submit a balanced budget is December 15th, so we will have final balanced budget documents and all of that in front of you on December-- at the December 12th meeting. It will be a heavy lift to get all those documents articulated by that meeting, so if there is any desire to adjust the budget from there, our recommendation at that point would be to adopt that budget as is and then to come back with a supplemental adjustment to that, because we would just not physically have enough time as it relates to-- as it relates to getting all those documents adjusted before our statutory deadline. And we, of course, want to be in compliance with that. Otherwise, the state takes our prior year's budget and, I believe, reduces it by 10%, and that's what we have. So we do--
That won't happen.
Yes, and just so-- and just so you know, we usually, you know, we're usually at this place about a month prior. We usually have this wrapped up before Thanksgiving.
The heavy hand of Nicola Sapp.
I'm sorry?
Okay, so for clarification, on the 12th, we're going to come back--
You will have three resolutions. So based on the three head nods, on the 12th, you will have three resolutions that will be-- that will require formal action on the agenda. The first is to adopt the budget as is. It will articulate budget numbers-- It will articulate budget numbers in it, and there will be an attachment, which will be the original adopted budget document that very clearly outlines all these changes. Your second resolution will be to adopt the mill levy for 2018. And then the third will be in compliance with Treasury state statutes to authorize transfers, the Treasury to make transfers in between funds. And so with that, based on what we have here in front of us, you, with the reserve strategy of the additional $328,000 going in, we're confident that we will be able to build this 2.8 in and then the rest of this as outlined below. One final point of clarification on the reserve. In prior years, it has been requested that we actually show this as an expenditure line item in the budget so that the citizens can see we have the reserve. However, the bond raiders really don't like this. They like the money to be shown in the reserve because obviously it's where it is intended to be. So my recommendation on this would be to leave it in the reserve. We will very clearly articulate it in the budget document. We can even add something in the resolution if we deem that that's appropriate, but to very clearly articulate it throughout the document and to outline that accordingly and within all the reserve balances. You will then see it as a line item in the reserve as we go into the 2018 monthly budget reports. That would be my recommendation to you. Are we good with that?
Yes. And just for clarification, and certainly my colleagues can freely weigh in and speak for themselves, there were at least three head nods to proceed with this. That does not mean that, and the two can address it, that they are going to vote against the budget. Certainly, their option to do that, but there's at least direction to be able to, this is how we're proceeding.
That's correct.
I'm very conscious of headlines that come out of these types of meetings.
That's correct. This meeting is not formal action. It is direction from the majority of the board. The formal action does indeed take place on the 12th.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
And I did want to thank you for that clarification because, of course, I want public input on the next week. And so that's, we need that, and that's what I'm asking for, is the public. And I mean, now that we've done this, we need more than just two people coming up, you know, today and speaking on this. So I am.
Commissioner, we're excited to have two. We've held these in the evenings and weekends where no one has showed up. I will just, I will just say that we've been having budget hearings and process for several weeks now. The budget, in compliance with state statute, has been open for inspection and input, and that is solicited, that is advertised, and we have not received any on that. So we do have a very open, robust process.
Absolutely. So this was for me, for moving forward. So then now we have the public input so we can get.
That's correct.
I want their input. Thank you.
That's correct.
Okay. I think we're done with department and committee reports.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate, and again, I like to thank everybody who's participated in this process.
Okay. Item 13.
There is no addendum today?
Item 14.
No request for executive session.
All right. We are adjourned.